We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order, apologize we're running a few minutes late, but we're gonna start with our pledge, and then if Commissioner Davis will do our invocation, please. Let me mute this thing before it goes off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we come to you tonight thanking you for all the many blessings you've given us. We ask, dear Lord, that you watch over this commission, help them make the right decisions that will further our community and further your cause here on earth. We ask you to be with us, guide, lead, and direct us, and always say and do, for we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Welcome. And we will get started with our agenda items. And that first item is the minutes.
Make the motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's the bills.
I'd like to approve the bills.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. There's no old business, so we'll skip right onto new business, and the first item's approve the police manual revisions and additions.
Y'all shouldn't have a passage just talking about some policy changes in our policy and procedure. A lot of them is just a word or two different. These kind of recommendations from KLC, a change means it will help increase better our rate towards the end. So that's the reason why we do them, and there was a few of them that needed to be updated. So we just need to pay to do them.
Moved to approve the police manual revisions.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's approve the 2020 motor vehicle tax rate, which was in your pocket, and that was sent down to us, we don't really do anything but approve it. The state said it.
Yeah, we don't have anything to do with that one, right?
No. We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's approve the first reading of the code of ordinances. This is something that Mary has to do at the beginning of each fiscal year. We've already approved all the ordinances throughout the year, but now we've gotta go back and approve the book, as she has put it together, with all the new ordinances in it.
So this is the one where all the ordinances get up there in the entire year?
Did I explain that correctly? As much as it makes no sense?
It's sort of up there in the ordinance for the entire year.
Yeah. We put a band around that. I move to adopt the ordinance.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's approve the first reading of the sewer ordinance on the tapping charges. And what we run into, and Larry's not here, he had to leave for a few minutes, but he should be right back, but what we are running into, there is right now the $250 in-town and $350 out-of-town tap-on fee to tap onto the sewer line. We're running into problems if someone has either a new tap or a repair, and they go in, we've got some issues right now we're having to deal with, where they cut blacktop to cross it, and fills it in with gravel, and then when you have rains, the gravel washes, gets in the storm drain, stops the storm drain up. So what he's wanting to do, what we are proposing to do is change the ordinance to specify that in addition to the $250 fee, the landowner would be responsible, property owner would be responsible for the cost of installation and all of the other upgrades that have to be done, like putting asphalt back, and a lot of times we do concrete instead of blacktop.
Right. So would they be responsible for it? Because it has to settle, you can't just, you cut a line, you can't just put it in right immediately. Would they be responsible for it for the, say, 12 months that it would be there? On cutting, if they cut the street for the sewer or something, or tapping on a waterline, are they gonna be responsible for it for 12 months while it sits there and settles before you put the asphalt down?
No, we wouldn't do anything until it settles.
No, I meant though, would the customer be responsible for it for 12 months?
More rock to go back in and all that kind of stuff.
No, we'd be responsible.
Which, take all the rock, they would just pay for the concrete and the repair when it's done.
Oh, okay.
It starts at the point where it's about, what, anywhere from $1,000, $1,500, $1,800 every time that happens.
Well, you need time and power too, you have to go up there and fill it in once or twice while it's settling.
And I, right off the top of my head, know two right now that's causing some issues that we're gonna have to be out.
They fixed the one on Main Street, which I'm real tempted they did, go in there and refill it.
You know, from the $250, now that supplies, they saddle, the plumber taps it, and we supply the rock to put it back in it. You know, that's pretty much breaking even right there, trying to use it all up.
And the amount of power hours, yeah.
It's nothing, we're not trying to make money off this, we're just trying to cover our costs, but there's a lot of additional costs that are coming up, and...
So did you make that motion?
I started to, but I wouldn't, no, you're fine, you're fine. I thought I'd make the motion that we approved the first reading of the sewer ordinance tapping charge.
We have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Next, we'll start with Mike Allen. Any...
As you see, I just gave everybody a letter of resignation from one of our officers, Officer York. He is no longer with us, he has moved on to the Sheriff's Department. Actually started today. Officer York, free luck here at the Hades, he did a good job. Nothing bad to say about him at all, he left on good standing. So I'd like to ask if you accept his letter of resignation, and also ask for permission to start advertising for a certified officer.
Make the motion, we accept this letter of resignation, and we begin to advertise for a certified officer.
We need to do that two separate motions.
Two separate, okay. But I'll just start with this one.
Resignation.
Second.
So we have a motion second, any further discussion? Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes.
Make the motion that we start advertising for a certified officer.
Second.
We have a motion second, any further discussion?
Are you just gonna advertise for certified only, Mike?
Uh, yeah.
At first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Those in favor signify with aye. Post same. Motion passes. Mike, anything else?
No, I can't answer this.
Everybody behaving?
Yes.
Okay, there he is. David, you?
I have anything to say.
How's everything going in your first month and a week?
It's going good, busy, it's going good.
Okay. Mr. Fratchy, who's there?
I don't have anything.
Who's there? Mr. McKee?
We've got a water bill issue. Larry can probably explain it better than I can. We got a bill in June for $764.35, and if I characterize this the wrong way, please correct me, this was supposed to be for the device they used to read the meters, is a computerized device, it's got a transponder on it, and they were getting an error message, I guess, and it was looking like it was no use at all, so we were paying the minimum amount. Then they read the meter, and the meter came up and said it was 140,100 gallons over 36 months. And that's what the bill was based on, it was discounted, but I got notified to come in, and we met several times with him. I had done some research, and the last time we met, the use of this water is on like no use street, there is no house, there is a building there, it's a garage, it does have water. But the use was exorbitant, it was 3,892 gallons per month, and no one lives there, no one stays there. We're rarely over there, my dad goes over there once in a while, sits on the front porch, and may use the restroom a little bit, but when you compare it to the house that he lives in, which is right behind this facility on Kentucky Street, the use at the non-inhabited place is 5.4 times higher than the use at the house, where we use the washer, the...
Is somebody tapped into your line?
Not that I know of. We got two meters out there, Kevin, there's, or two...
I know what you're talking about, I know with buildings and everything.
Yeah, there's two, it says two pieces of property that have been joined together, and there's two right there beside the driveway. So when we met, I told him, I said, "This does not look right, I think there's an error here somewhere, because the water usage is just, it can't be correct." Now, I got the prints, I'd be happy to get, I brought copies for everybody, would you like to sit?
Larry, is there a way we can check to see if there's water being taken out there that, where it would be going? Because that's a lot of water.
You know, the only thing we're responsible for is to the meter, anything beyond that, we wouldn't have any knowledge.
Nope. There's no, there's no water hydrants or anything that somebody could tap into?
We have an outdoor faucet that's got about a three-foot hole so we can fill up a water bucket. Now, we planted a small garden over there, I did for my dad, but, I mean, I use like three, five gallon buckets of water.
No soft places in the yard or anything?
No leaks.
No water running down the ditch or...
We haven't used sprinkler systems. In the wintertime, he's rarely there, I might go over there once in a while to check it, but there's just virtually no water usage. The house he lives in, where he's there seven days a week, he's using the restroom, he's using the dishwasher, he's using the washer. We're averaging 720 gallons a month of actual usage, and the vacant place is 3,892 gallons. Now, my house in Hartford, where I live in Hartford, we're averaging 3,100 gallons. My wife does laundry all the time, so something, and this is, Larry was very nice, he was very professional, very nice, we laid this out, we discussed it, and I said, "What's the solution? Where do we go from here?" And he said, "I really don't know." And I said, "Do I need to come forward to the City Commission?" And he said, "Yeah, that's probably..."
We definitely need to know where the water's going, that's my main concern, is where's the water going?
We can send the meter off to have it tested. In my experience, we have never had a meter come back that has overread.
But did you look, is it running? I mean, it's not running?
No.
And yet it still showed it had how many gallons, 3,000-some gallon a month?
3,892 gallons a month. Would you like to see copies? I mean, I got these copies from, was it Mary? Mary printed these simply to me. I've got the one on the house.
The one on the house should be, should be turning while it's, if you look at the meter...
If it's running. If they were constantly turning.
Three years on the floor, sorry about that. Now, this is, if you'll notice, that's 452 Kentucky, this is the Magnolia address, this is, this one is the one in question.
Three years?
Yeah.
And it started three years ago?
Well, we got the bill in June, and it was a 36-month bill, correct, based, and it was 140,000, 140,100 gallons.
What if they, did it finish on zero?
Yeah.
Transponder?
The transponder will send out a signal, and for 36 months, it was sending out a zero usage.
Here's a worksheet I worked up in preparation for this. You forgive my handwriting, please?
And then the secondary reading, if different periods of time, it has zero usage for so long, we're gonna have to hand-read it, and the dial or the register actually has a number. When you read the numbers, that's when it comes up with this difference of reading, the transponder version and the manual reading.
What if we shut the water off at the meter for a few days and see what happened? Could we do that?
I don't know what that's gonna tell you.
Well, it shouldn't run any water through it.
I know it was shut off.
Well, then you know somebody's getting the water, it's gotta be going somewhere, we need to, that's my big thing, where's all this water going?
Question, how long has the transponder been faulty maybe? Are there two meters on the same line?
There are two covers, I don't know if it's got two meters on it. Larry, does it have two meters?
No, there's one meter for that resident.
There's one, and the other home does not have a meter, that's right.
I think that's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought. We own the place across the street, on the other side of that home, there's a little house there, but we got the electric and the water turned off, and that's not in question. This is, this is just a vacant lot with a garage, we cleaned up an old house, got it huddled off, and built a nice garage there.
This is a question, who should be responsible?
Something's wrong, I think the evidence, this handwritten note, if you look, here's the actual readings per month on 452 Kentucky. This is where, this is where my dad is living, this is the actual water usage, okay? The Magnolia, top of this worksheet here, it was 36 months, 140,100 gallons, which is 3,892 gallons a month, and nobody's there. Now, I'm not saying we never use water there, we do use a little bit of water there, but not there. There's no way this can be out there.
And if you don't see anything running, I can't imagine where the water's going.
There are no leaks, Kevin, I walked that ground numerous times, Larry's checked it too, I think we talked about that, he said he couldn't find any leaks. I asked if there's any way somebody could have tapped into our line that we didn't know about.
If we shut the water off for a few days just for to test it, would you care about that?
If that won't show anything, because if anybody's tapped into it, it'll be after the meter.
That's what I'm saying, but whoever's tapped into it's not gonna get any water for a few days.
Well, that's true, they won't have water, but they're not gonna come tell you they don't have water.
They might after a few days.
I bet they don't.
I don't know how they could have gotten anybody's knowledge, but beyond me, I just know that these numbers for the Magnolia address cannot be correct.
Even if that were the case, this is a lot of usage.
That's what I'm thinking.
It's way more than what I use at home in Hartford.
Maybe in the neighborhood.
Some of you, some of the folks up here know my wife, but she's doing laundry all the time, Mike. It cannot be accurate, and I'm not saying, Larry, I'm not pointing fingers, Larry, Larry is a total gentleman, totally professional, I'm saying this is not accurate, I don't know why, I don't know why it's not accurate, I don't know what the solution is, I don't know how to catch it, but I don't think we ought to be responsible for the bill.
And I would like to know where it's going, I mean, if it's running that much water, I would like to know where it's going. I'm sorry.
If you'd like to know where it's going, then turn the meter off, put your cell phone up, visualize the scene, see if someone's tapping into your water or not, and you'll know if you got it exactly where you're at.
Because, I mean, if nothing else, I mean, if you run a new line, which I hate to make, I hate anybody to do that, but that would guarantee that the only person on that line's gonna be you. But that's having to run a new water line, and that's ridiculous to have to run a new water line, if there's nothing wrong with the line, if it's just something else.
I don't know if it's an equipment defect or not, I don't know.
Why was it reading zero all that time and it...
The transponder is sending out the zero read, the secondary read that you can verify is the manual read on the register.
Okay, but why was it sending out zero all the time?
I cannot answer that.
Well, we definitely need to change the transponder if nothing else.
I mean, we can send the meter off and have it tested, that's not a problem, but, you know, we need to know what direction we go if it tests good, or what direction we go for test bad.
How long was it? If I understand, there was a minimum bill, and then all of a sudden, after how many months there is...
36.
The transponder kept showing a zero read.
But the question is, if it is something that happened that's the fault of the city, it's difficult to pass 36 months to a customer.
I agree, that's why the secondary read is there, you can verify it.
But again, it's not, yeah, it's not his fault that we had, we waited 36 months and checked the secondary read. That's my problem with it. Why 36 months, Larry? And again, I'm not faulting you either.
Well, that possibly been changed on our part, because anytime a zero read pops up, rises now, we check every month. So, you know, we corrected that part on our side.
Okay.
We were paying the minimum fee.
Right. I mean, I get that, that takes off of what you did.
2,000 gallons a minimum? So they were paying the 2,000 gallons every month, it's basically the...
But it was double?
1,892 gallons.
Yeah, I think this is pretty simple legally, I don't think you can pass it on to customers.
Yeah, I can't, I can't justify, if it's our fault, I cannot pass it on to the customer for no reason. But the problem is, I still, that doesn't solve the problem, the problem's still there, where's the water going? If he's actually running that much water through it, where's it going? Because I know Bill McKee, he could, he could sit out there all day long, he doesn't even drink water, he might drink beer, but he doesn't drink water, or two, rude or unrude it, but anyway...
This was for June, so this was read June, then it was still, the last time it was zero was when?
Here, Paul, here's the original, or not the original, but this is the bill that we got, that had the increase, and when I talked to Larry, he said it was 36 months.
Yeah, I just wanted the date.
This is the, made it June, and here's the usage, the, Mary said to add two zeros, right?
Yeah.
So it's 140,100.
So this would have been read on 6/14?
6/14 is only half a big usage.
Okay, so we back, what did it read on 7/14?
7/15 was zero.
That's because the transponder's still reading zero.
But did you go to a manual read on then?
This is a whole new...
We've been a manual transponder.
Knew everything, now it's wrong.
Oh, and it's still reading zero?
Well, he probably didn't use any water that month.
He didn't, but he didn't do anything different?
There's gonna be some water go through there, but it's, it's gonna be a very minimal amount, as far as usage in that place. Because we do, we do have a bathroom in there, and we've got that little faucet.
When you went and checked the water meter, did you go check that manually on July 14?
This is the following month.
And it's still at zero?
See, it's reading 70,100 gallons.
It's not a residual reading, and we're reading 100 gallons, so until it reaches just 100 gallons, we're...
So he used less than 100 gallons in that month?
In that month. But did you do a manual read in July?
No, manual and lady, we'd read.
What was the manual, do you remember?
I don't, did everybody go on the worksheet?
I'm sure, they were all my reading stuff, I'm sure, but, I mean, it would have been the same really changing, so it should have been zero.
So the manual should have matched then what?
After all the discussion, what I'm gonna ask you folks to do is waive the charges or cancel the charges. We'll be happy to pay what we owe, but I don't think that's what we owe, I don't think that's an accurate reading of what we, what we use over there. Now, I don't know, it's like Larry, I talk, I don't know what the answer is, I don't know how to check this, so, but I'm asking you to cancel or waive the charges.
Larry, if it came up zero in this last month, why was it using so much before? I mean, I'm not trying to point fingers at anybody, I'm just curious why.
Only thing that, I can't answer that, only thing we're responsible for is to the meter, anything beyond, we have no control. So we can send the meter off, we can have it tested for verification on our behalf, or we can just, you know, chop it up.
But even if you say there was a faucet out there for the hole, even if that was left on, how long that had to run? To get...
It would have been, a toilet, a toilet would run 8,000 gallon pretty easy in a month, you know, if it was leaking.
Really?
And you wouldn't see no water pop up in the yard, and just, you know, I'm saying what the issue is, but...
We haven't had any leaks, and we haven't done, we don't run sprinklers in any of them.
Well, I know Bill is pretty very particular about his stuff, and that's the reason I say it, it just doesn't sound like him at all. So really, we'd have no idea where the water went, we don't know if it was the transponder that's messed up, or if there is a leak, or...
We know the transponder's messed up, because it's been sent out a call three.
We don't know if the meter...
He shouldn't have been sending out a zero reading if it was using that kind of...
So, but the last month we checked it, it did show, it showed zero again.
My suspicion is, over the 36 months, you had a toilet stick wide open for a couple months in a row, there was no indication of a leak in the ground, it all went back into the sewer. That's, that's my best guess, can't prove it. Do I think, do I think the meter's faulty? Transponder gives mechanical.
It's hard for, it's hard, no offense, it's hard for a water meter to mess up, I'm sorry.
Well, it's him, it's him to be like us, we slow it in.
Yeah, and they're pretty simple too. I would, I'd like to say, I'd like to check one more time, if in August we check it, this month we check it, and it comes back a zero reading again, I have no problem with waiving the fee. I don't, because there's something wrong somewhere. It may be a one-time thing where a water pipe busted or something, that you would have noticed that.
They'd have fixed it.
And, you know, and I think he'd notice if his toilet was running.
We have any problem, we don't, we got a half bath, I guess you'd call it.
Yeah, he just came over in the sink, yeah, I've been there.
The sink is not leaking, the commode's not leaking, we haven't watered anything, we, there's no leak outside, there's no wet spot outside, so that's what I say, it's just not making sense.
There's really no way even to tell what month or when it happened or anything, is there?
That's a lot of water usage for a full family living there. I mean, that would be a full family of four or five probably, to get that much average usage, and it's just not possible.
I'm gonna agree with you.
I'd like to wait another month, and then, would you mind doing that, just for us? Just to see, because if it shows up again zero, then there's something really strange going on.
That's fine.
Larry, do you think that would be okay if we just tabled it until next month and then dealt with it?
We've been dealing this for two, three months.
And I'm not trying to put you off, I just wanna check it one more time.
Larry has been more than professional dealing this, and I'm asking him some pretty straight questions, and he's honest, he said, "I don't know the answer."
Every month he's come in, he said, "Do I need to pay anything?" And I said, "No, let's get it resolved before we do anything."
Yeah, we may all have the meter checked, because it may be the one in a million.
It could be, but I just don't think so.
Have you ever heard of a neighbor running the hose over to their house?
Oh, yeah, and I know his, I know your dad's neighbors, not to say they would do it.
That's what I was getting at a while ago, but it's still gonna take a lot of water running a long time.
We haven't caught him, I'll put it that way.
I've heard of running the cable lines to the neighbor next door.
I've heard that too.
Extension cord, yeah, we heard a lot of that. Okay, so is everyone good with that?
Thank you, Cliff.
Thank you all.
Sir?
Can I stand up?
Oh, absolutely.
Anything you want. My name is Denny Hughes, I actually live in Mexico Beach, Florida, but we have a place here in, on Rochester Road, and we come up here and spend a week or two, and since the hurricane, we're spending two months up here. Me and Mike play pickleball, I play down in Florida, and, you know, it's taken off in Owensboro big time, there's probably seven, eight different places they're playing there, I'm guessing there's probably 200 to 300 people playing. So I told Larry this morning, the good part or the bad part, most of them's old people like me. Now, we are getting a lot of young people starting to play, but it's, or people like Mike, that age really. I asked Larry about, and Mary, asked them about the tennis courts up on Fourth Street, and we looked at them, and they're, they're in rough shape, but to get it started in this area, they could be fixed fairly easy. The two issues I seen up there was, we can coat them, we can do that ourselves, just to put a sealant on a court, and we probably only set up one court and maybe two to get started. And as I told Larry, they need to be washed off, and there's no water up there, and Larry thought that a fire truck might have a leak up there and clean them off fires or something. And then we'd seal them, it needs to use some roundup up there to kill the weeds, we'll take care of that. And then we'd have to paint lines for the pickleball court, you know, it can be hand-painted. We use chalk for two or three years down in Mexico Beach, it's a lot of work every time, especially if you have a lot of rain washes it off. And I just wanted to see if we could get permission to use them courts.
How big a space do you need?
You have, the courts are 20 foot wide and 44 foot long, you could easily put four, You could easily put four, if not eight, on that. We, we put four down home on a real precise tennis court, and you've got two courts up there.
I know we had some pickleball players come over to Wellness Center and play on the racketball court. I just wondered if that, is it too small?
Yeah, it's too small. You knew. Racketball's twenty by forty, right?
Did tell them, man, answer that one.
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty by forty, and we need that, you need about five foot on each side of that twenty foot, and you need seven to eight feet minimum on each end, because people like Mike can run over the line sometimes.
I don't keep blaming them about a second house, I mean, now, I go to Owensboro four days a week, but Denny goes two, three days a week, so it's big over there, and one of our biggest obstacles will be getting the awareness that people that play love it, but when you say pickleball, most of them look, it's like, what, what are you talking about? But we have, and it's big in Owensboro.
Well, it's, it's actually as big. Mike's been talking to me about it.
It's actually the fastest growing sport in the United States the last four years. The villages down in Florida has a hundred and seventy-eight courts. When we started, we took a basketball court and set up three. We have seven now, and just new energy come in and build. They actually built the courts for eight, but they measured wrong, and we were gonna hit four on them. So, we have eleven courts right there in town to play on. It's, it's a good activity, there's really, the people's what's the best part. You get to meet a lot of people, and they're always good people, except for Mike.
Okay, and my question on that is, with the grant that we had with the tennis courts, would we be allowed to let it play there?
My answer would be, we could play on until they came and told us no.
Well, I don't think anybody's gonna check, that's what I'm saying.
No one's been playing tennis on them.
No, nobody plays anything on them.
And I hate to see them sit there empty, so...
It could be utilized.
The worst they can do is slap us on the hands later.
The second thing, and I didn't think of this for later, that always would come in handy, is if we had a trash can up there. You know, we all have to have water to drink, and if you've got a trash can there, that the city would pick up and throw away once a month, or whatever, it would, not the trash can, the trash, if it, keep the park clean.
And we have nets and paddles that we will supply when it starts. If it doesn't take off, we don't need to do much more about it. But let's say it did take off, if you could leave nets up all the time, if that would be feasible, I don't know if it would or not, whether it'd be vandalism or what, but we'll have our nets, we'll set them up, take them down when we play. But if ever got, people wanna play, if they're on leisure, we couldn't leave them up, it's a portable net, you know. If you had, and the poles are twenty-seven foot apart, I measured a while ago, the center lines, if you painted lines, if somebody didn't wanna play tennis, the center lines that we have are two foot, we'd go two foot inside the tennis lines, different colors, so you could, if you really wanted to utilize that court for dual purpose, if ever got to that. But, like, one of our biggest aspects will be, how do we tell the community, get anybody interested, and then if that happens, then it's a different ballgame then, but that's just a wait-and-see thing.
I went to Purdue Farms, talked to them. There's a couple of them getting ready to retire, that they wanna start playing, or learn the game. I talked to Dan Jackson, the attorney over, he's played before, he said he'd be interested. Scott Lewis, I think he lives right down here.
People breathe.
Yeah.
Maybe when he gets off his cane.
And if we have, down there, and up here, too, we have an eighty-five-year-old man that plays, and we have a woman that's a little older, but nobody will ask her age. And so, I, I didn't ask her her age. She was born in nineteen thirty-two, she told me. And so, you can do the math there, and she'll kick your butt. And it's amazing. But anyway.
I have no problem with it at all.
Sounds good to me.
Do you want to make that a motion?
I wouldn't think so.
I was gonna say, we might not opt.
I don't know why we would need to, it's just, it's a facility we use.
That was not an official minutes.
Larry, can you get a trash can up there one day when they start playing? And one more question, do they, they don't play the soccer up there anymore? They don't do the soccer up there anymore, the...
Sometimes they show up, yeah.
Sale?
Well, if the nets are portable stuff, that's, that's where we had trouble, we had some people...
We need to get a fire truck to hose it off plenty before we do our thing. We need, we need to wait that...
Fire chiefs already gave a thumbs up, so...
They already put a thumbs up, so it'll get washed off, so...
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you all. I heard that was an easy one.
That was easy, I liked those.
Jody?
Don't anybody else be easy.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Is that pickleball?
No. No.
Name's Randy Hurd, I'm representing the Green Meadows Community Subdivision, we're here about the water issue.
I think he was saving you guys till last, because he thought you might...
Okay.
No, I was going down the line, I didn't know who's who. I knew Beth said she wanted to be the spokesperson, and I hadn't got to her yet, and stuff.
My name's Eddie Henry, I know everybody in here, but we live in, there's several of us here from Green Meadows Subdivision, and I've lived there for about three years, three to four years now. And we have a major flooding problem down there. My house is up towards sixty-two, forty-three Green Meadows, and I have a lake that literally surrounds my house, and, and it goes down by Larry Arnold's, all the way across to the other part of the subdivision, all the way down to Guffins, and down by Beth's, and it just becomes a huge lake. And it happens whenever we get, you know, heavy rains, it's not a light rain, but when we get heavy rains, all that water coming from sixty-two, the ditches can't handle it, and I think, this is my personal opinion, looking at things, down by Beth's house, the ditch is just, it's got junk in it, for lack of a better term. I mean, it's just, everything's grown up, and water can't get out fast enough, and so therefore, it starts backing up, and then it becomes a lake. So, what we're asking is, for the city to come and look at the ditch, and possibly clean out that ditch, so the water can get out of the subdivision, and see if that pretty much takes care of it. It's backing up all the way up, almost to sixty-two, and that's, that's previous subdivision.
Who's the last house as it goes out? Who's the last house?
It is, it is on city property. It's on the sewer plant property, where that's at, too.
And she's got some telephone, sorry, Kenergy poles, they're actually kinda falling in that ditch, and she's already talked to Kenergy.
They're not falling over, but they, the yard is eroding away, so they're now in the ditch where they used to be in the yard, on land, you know? They're now in the ditch.
So, we're asking for some help to try to get that water out of that, out of subdivision.
We've got several pictures.
Yes, and if y'all wanna see pictures, we got...
I've got a video of the last rain, hard rain, on my phone.
I have no problem at all cleaning out the ditch, and from the way it sounds, it needs it. What about the long, do you want ditches along the streets cleaned out as well, or, I mean...
It's gonna cause, the way your yard, yard'll look, look different when we clean the ditches out in your yard.
It's needed.
That's not gonna help.
Well, I'm saying, if we go all the way down, but we start...
You're coming in, this runs along beside my property, goes to Beth, it comes in, hits a ninety, and then it hits, then it turns and goes to the waterline. But what it actually needs is another tile in there for a straight shot, more of a straight shot. So, I want it to get away, I mean, the water can't get away, that's the problem.
Well, and where the biggest problems at, because I knew this was coming, so I did a little research, where your biggest problem is at, and there's nothing that any of us can do about it, is the stretch of the creek, or the ditch, whatever, that goes from where it leaves the subdivision, across the Barnard Farm to the next big creek. You have fifteen-hundred foot and less than one, well, actually, one-third of one percent fall. Water won't drain on a third of one percent. Now, you add that on top of the fact, that empties into that creek, which from there makes a ninety to the north, and empties into Muddy Creek, and you add on the fact with, and with, and of course, having been in the drainage business and arguing, and not a big fan of the Kentucky Division of Water, you have people like Kentucky Division of Water who, you know, we can't clean out anything anymore, because you will disturb some bat or a beaver, or whatever. So, in the last twenty years, you've had Muddy Creek, well, Rough River's not been cleaned out, Muddy Creek's not been cleaned out, the ditches running there hadn't been cleaned out, and the one from across the Barnard Farm, they just had to get cleaned out, so they're doing the same things happening to them as what's happened to the one across the lot there by Beth's. Now, granted, that's ours, we can clean it, well, we may get in trouble for it, because it is a blue line stream, but again, I'm one of these, we'll, we'll worry about the forgiveness later, instead of the permission on something like that. Please don't quote me on that one. I know. We'll clean, but we'll clean, we can get that cleaned out.
There used to be a pond back there.
On Barnard?
That water went into, and they filled that in, and they, you know, whoever's farming it now, filled all that in. I think that took care of a lot of it.
They pulled some, they brought a track hoe in there, and they pulled bushes out of that ditch a couple of years ago, and then I think they filled the pond in when they done that. But personally, I think if you cleaned that out, it cut the street, but another towel is as big as that now, so it worried.
Well, again, the problem is, no, I know, the problem is, it's just, it's, it's so flat.
I know.
Generally, you want a minimum, a bare minimum, and that's not even a good minimum, of two percent fall to get water away from anything, and like I say, that fall across that farm right there is about one-third of one percent.
It's gotta help to clean a ditch out.
Oh, absolutely, and I'm, I'm not, we'd be happy to clean the ditch out, because it, it needs it. It needs it, and we need, it needs it, if nothing else, to protect, towards washing out into, to Beth's yard and around those power poles, because that's...
I wonder if there's any way that could rock, we did a little bit, remember a little bit of rock on one, on my side of it, several years ago, probably, within the last five, but it's not, that rock is now falling into holes, that I've actually pulled some of that rock up to kinda try and fill some holes up.
It's a big red raft.
And then, totally rock, yeah.
Have you got videos of you lifting that up?
No, no, but I have done it. But I've pulled in some holes, but then it keeps sinking down, and the yard's really is becoming less and less there. And it, it needs something. I quit spraying weeds, but I thought, okay, need some roots or something there, though.
And you're right, that, that's...
So, I, I don't know.
We got another problem, too. Where it comes out right in the middle of subdivision, over Forty Golden, I live at Forty Golden Road Lane, right there on the left side of my property, that culvert there, it always comes over the road. I've got a video of the last hard rain, it ended up in Tony's, right like...
I've seen that.
Yeah, and...
Get it in your garage?
Well, we get it from the back, but I got that...
But that, the culvert across the street right there can't be any lower than the bottom of the ditch across the road. That's where we run into problems, and everything, it's so flat through there.
But as it comes down to us, it backs up faster, because it can't get through there. It goes through there so fast, it can't get out down there.
But a bigger culvert there can't be done, because of the ditch across the road, without making it deeper, and we can't make it deeper, because it's only two foot higher than what it is down where it goes under the, Bluegrass? Yeah, Bluegrass. I've heard all about the water at Tony's. And that's why I knew some of this, and that's why I went ahead, and I've been spending some time looking at some of these maps and stuff, trying to figure out anything that could be done, and, and, like I say, the ditch, we will get that cleaned out and taken care of, and work on that, and, and hopefully, that'll alleviate a little bit, but I know the one rain that she showed me some stuff on, when it got up, I mean, maybe when you got in your garage, but you say it comes from behind you?
Yeah, no, it's got in my garage, and I know it's got into your system's garage now, it goes under their house.
Yeah, but what's coming down through there, that one rain, there is nothing that's gonna be done that night.
That boat ran in his house, and it comes across, live in the street, Clover Lane? Clover Lane. It makes a, Larry Arnold's there, he's got a deep ditch across the road, and it, it's gone, I mean, you can't see it, it's just a lake.
Yeah.
And I got a, it came around my house so hard one time, my kids got in a kiddie pool and floated...
Was it your pool? Okay. I knew there was a pool, and Beth had a pool all of a sudden.
This is from my house, Forty Golden Road Lane.
There's water.
Yeah, I don't know how that happened.
I don't either.
There's water going down the alley.
There's Tony's garage. Guess what's gonna, uh, go to us?
You see that culvert, there's a hump over that culvert right there.
Does that need to be cleaned out or anything?
Well, there's...
There's not a lot of drop.
There's just not a drive, it's just...
That's the problem. I mean, we clean ditches out, but I don't know that it'll ever make a lot of water go anywhere faster or expensive.
Along the road.
It's hard.
Along the street, yes.
But if there's any way to stop, and water comes from across sixty-two, we get that too, on the other side of the highway, that comes over two places.
Or does it hurt any of that?
I haven't looked over there. I was looking at downstream, trying to get it out.
That won't be us, will it?
I mean, getting it out will be...
That'd be state.
Well, and that's, again, that's getting, that's not even in the city limits.
That's really close to his problem. I mean, I've got some bad leaves, it is terrible.
That will, this, across the road's not in the city, and it's on private property, and then you get the point, the state is the one who put that, that's a storm, a state highway, well, actually, it's a federal highway, but it's under state control, so they would've been the ones who would've put that and handled that storm piping across there. And I don't, I can't picture, and I've been back there, too, but I can't picture what it, how the ground lays over there, or where it's all coming from, across sixty-two.
Coming in on the east, turns into subdivision, looks to the east, and there's a ditch coming down through there, turns right, and there's one comes across the fell during there, and it all comes up down to us.
Yep.
And that cornfield up on that east of us, that also comes down to us.
Everything from about the curve on sixty-two comes right down through your, I don't, I don't know where you live, but I know where you live. Okay. Between, has it come between you?
Tierney's house, he moved into Tierney's house.
Oh, okay.
So, then he, he's got the lake in the backyard. Yeah.
Yeah, you're, so you're right there with Kelly, and then Terry and Tony, and then Larry.
Yeah.
Every bit of water that goes between those houses is coming from all the way up to the curve of sixty-two. I don't know how much from across, like I said, I didn't even look, but even a lot of that...
There's a culvert coming under sixty-two.
Yeah. So, I don't know what comes under, from under, but I know what's coming on the sixty-two side, on your all side of sixty-two. You know, they all come right between those four houses, well, six, because you all be up on the hill where it comes through, too. But we'll, let's get that ditch cleaned out, and do some work on it to at least see what that does. Well, it can't hurt, we'll put it that way, so, you know, it can't...
And we can always back up the ditch a little further.
And wait, and see, and then go from there, and just keep going until as far as we can go.
Because I talked to Larry a long time ago, a couple of years ago, about that water down there.
I know Beth made a comment to me a while ago, the ditch has gotten wider, and that's what's gonna happen, when you get, when your, your lowest point where the, where it's all draining to, by, on the Barnard Farm, it gets to the point, it can't get any lower than that, so it doesn't get deeper, that's when it starts getting wider. And, and there's no way to control water when it starts doing something like that.
Like, that's what I was thinking, about some of that, or something, the yard, where it would...
Live around out on the left.
Yeah.
Is there any room to put any kind of collection pond, like, on the other side of her, where mine accounts?
You're not, it's, the kind of water comes through there, it's not gonna make, it's, no, just, and I'm not trying to, I'd be willing to try anything if we could make it, but it just, with the kind of water that comes through there, that would just, it'd be full and, before the, well, by the time the ditches are.
Right.
Because there's a lot of water comes through there. I've seen the water come through there, just on a normal rain, it's a lot of water, especially behind your house and by yours, but you take it with what we had, especially that night.
If we can get it out of there faster, it at least helps on.
The problem is, it stays, and it's a hazard for a long time, you end up, it doesn't get up like that.
Yep, let's, let's work on that one, and see how that goes. That's a star, we'll see, because like I say, I understand where you're coming from, and if, if that's, if that helps a little bit, but it needs more help, then we might start, like I say, start ditching on up. Because I know, I'm just like your boss, I don't wanna ditch in my front yard either. But sometimes we can't help that kind of stuff, if that's what, you know, to get it out and take care of everybody.
Thank you so much. I've got a couple more things, like Frank, okay, I live in Forty Golden Road Lane, up trucks, school buses, cars, I mean, they fly down that road. Speed limit's twenty miles an hour. There's kids playing on that road, people walking that road all the time, people got dogs making out the road, I mean, they, they scoot. And, you know, we get speed limit signs on each one of them roads.
There was a speed limit, wasn't there a speed limit sign out there at one time?
It's a street law.
I don't know.
I thought there was, I thought it was twenty-five miles.
I mean, that's, that's not, no, everything's twenty unless marked otherwise.
It's one over on Clover, I think one on Green Meadows.
I don't know, the signs are better.
Those two streets don't have them.
Yeah, we could get a, that would be a problem.
And then another, another thing, it's a city street, right? We're in a city. Can you spark a lawnmower trailers and block the road all the time, really feel like it on any city streets over here?
Not supposed to.
Well, they do that there quite often, that just aggravated fire, they get somebody yardy around lumber, trailer, you know, almost drives it up.
Commercial, a commercial lawn.
They do that on my street, too.
You know, because we aren't open, it's aggravating.
Can you all?
Anytime you see one, give us a call, I'll dispatch, let them know that somebody parked in the street, we'll come over and get it. And we'll, we'll just make a throw over, and slow, slow down.
But it is aggravating. A lot of times they go over somebody's house, just get it out.
Lots of old grass out there.
That gets long.
That's, and that's illegal.
That is illegal to blow grass in yards. I mean, on the, on the, on the blacktop. Illegal.
I don't, Art doesn't mention it in my business, but I live on Ruppell, Ellis Park. And they used to walk up there, he'll just find, they put a speed bump. Now, we have to contend with it, but I really contend with the speed bump as what's the traffic go fast. And when they put a speed bump there, all the traffic.
That's a dirty word, Mike. Don't say speed bump.
Our, our insurance, our insurance company. Mainly because, and the sad part of it is, mainly you put a speed bump in and if somebody hits it, if they're breaking the law and it tears their car up, we're responsible for it.
That's what I wanted to.
I also had a guy pull a shotgun on me because I was putting a speed bump in front of his house one time and I don't like those things.
I'm kind of like you. I, I have no problem with a speed bump.
Yeah, I mean, it worked in our neighborhood until the snowplows go.
That's, that's exactly where we run into.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know. I, I knew there's something to that. I didn't know what's here.
That would mean they know, it is pretty problematic.
The, all of the back streets, people just fly like they're on a freeway. It just, I, I don't, I don't get it.
We can take taxes with speed bump at the same time.
And it's like the shorter the street, the faster we can make it down.
Put your makeup on and eat your sandwich while you're driving. He said taxes.
It's sad, on the street, you're talking about, there's, it's just between two streets. It's not a long.
Yeah, it's not a wide street.
A few ounces out there.
It's just a square.
Yeah, there's, there's no, through traffic.
I've been there. I know what's wrong with them.
Okay, come out. Yeah, we've seen. In front of our house even with the cul-de-sac down there.
They really have to floor it.
And there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood now.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, is that it? Y'all good? Okay, I want to make sure you were done because I used to, uh huh, okay. Ray? You're with them? Okay. Jim?
I'm fine.
Sandy?
Don't have anything.
I covered everything I had.
I'm good.
Are you? Larry? Really?
Yes.
Mary? Mary? Wait, if he does.
Actually.
Oh, here we go.
We have two police cars. We can put on good deals. We can start that process. Ninety-nine Explorer and a two thousand four. Oh, nine round bed, ninety-nine Explorer.
You made a motion? I move, advertise vehicles on good, good deals.
Second. You have a motion second. Any further discussion? Those are papers seen by the House? Oh, same. Motion passes. Are you done? Mary? I don't have anything, so.
Holy cow. I think that's a first.
No, we got out here thirty minutes one time. No one's here.
I know, but I meant where nobody had anything.